Good evening and welcome to the November twelfth, two thousand and twenty four business meeting. We are reconvening after we were in executive session for one personnel matter. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait a minute. Everything's a little slow. Maybe it's me. For September is available in the business. I can't. It's not saying it, but.
It's available in the business office.
There you go. That's what it usually says. I might like to open up for public comment on listed agenda items. Okay, so we're going to move to the consent agenda. Mr. O, number one, please.
Why is this not working?
I don't know.
Thank you.
I thought it was me.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through seven is presented to the board at this meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor? Oh, questions or comments?
The consent agenda includes approval of the previous meeting minutes, CSC CPSC placements, additional or unpaid hours for various staff members, the winter twenty twenty four twenty five coaches, the game day coordinator for the winter season, which is Dawn Casson, and approval for an updated substitute listing for the school year.
Just one comment. I'm very happy. I see that Ms. Casson, Dawn Casson, has been appointed the game day coordinator. She's very beloved by many of the students, and I think that that was an excellent choice. I just want to add my two cents in on that.
Your two cents is always welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolutions pass. Presentations tonight. We're going to start with technology. We're not going in alphabetical orders.
Technology's the first.
Technology's the first. Okay.
So we'd like to welcome up Mr. Michael Lee. Welcome.
Yes, 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 yes.
So before you start, Mike, I have to say, in looking over your presentation beforehand, I'm thinking, I don't even know what half of these words are. So I'm hoping you're going to explain it to us while you talk through your presentation.
I think so. All right. So I'm Mike Lee, and this is the technology update presentation. And I'm really excited to be here today because legitimately, I think for the first time, I've got a presentation where I could use a laser pointer.
Whoa.
You see that?
Ah, I like that.
So that's for later. I'm going to use that later. It is. I know I could use the cursor.
Twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You need one that shows that.
I know. I should.
Now, if you had an AI bot doing your presentation for you, then that would.
You know what? The budget presentation. That's what we're going to do. That's what we're going to do.
It'd be like an AI hologram of you standing there.
I like it. I like it. I like it. All right.
That would be cool.
So we'll start off with a quote. It's not that we use technology, we live technology. And I think as technology gets more pervasive, right? And the more technology we have just in our pockets, right? This, this has never been more true, and it's only going to continue to become even more true, if it could become more true. So yes, I believe we are truly living technology now. Okay. So what have we been up to and what are we up to? Well, we continue our BenQ product homogenization, which means we're standardizing on just one platform, right? So currently, we've got all of our academic spaces covered with, you know, flat panel displays, right? But they're not all from BenQs. What we're doing is just to make the experience for the teachers and for the students the same. We're replacing the old New Line displays with BenQs, and that's sort of like in a staged process. And of course, we're continuing to provide our on-demand professional development with these.
Just before you go on, are we losing anything in the homogenization?
No, these are much better than the devices that we're replacing.
So it's mostly devices, not programs?
No, right, right, right. These are, these are displays.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like touch panel, like displays. Yeah, yeah. Yep, yep. All right, so we've got new network cores. And I was thinking, what's a good way that I could try to explain what a network core is that everyone understands it? And so I thought, oh, it's like a roundabout, right? So the size, you have to think about this, the size of files on the internet, they're definitely not getting any smaller, right? If anything, they're getting bigger. Think about the phones, you're, think about the pictures you take on your phones, right? They're, they're, the file sizes are pretty big now. On phones, you could also take four K video, right? These files are huge, and if you want to send it to somebody, it has to go through a network to do that. So a network core is like changing out a roundabout, right? Think of like the switches and the access points as the streets, right? But then a roundabout, everything in a network has to go through the cores, sort of like a roundabout, right? Like all the traffic has to go into the roundabout to go pick another destination. It goes in and then goes out another way. So what we did was we basically, we installed larger roundabouts, roundabouts that could handle faster traffic, that could fast, that could handle larger cars, right? So that's what we did. The elementary school is all done, and the high school is scheduled to have this one replaced on November twenty-sixth. So why does this matter, right? Well, with all this traffic going through, we have to make sure we have enough bandwidth for this, computer-based testing, right? With everyone taking pictures and sending videos and everything, we have to make sure that the kids can take their tests without flaw, without fault, right?
Well, what happened to the middle school? You had elementary school, high school.
It's, the cores are, are campus-based. So there's the elementary school campus.
High school, middle school campus.
Yeah, high school, yeah.
Okay, got it. I just, okay, got it.
It'd be funny if I were like, I have middle school.
Wait. I'm glad Travis isn't here.
Right, right, right.
Okay, thank you.
So spring of two thousand and twenty-six, that's when we have full computer-based testing, right? So we're on track to get all the roundabouts in, all the streets widened by then.
And now, and then the state has to do their part.
The state has to do their part. Right, right. Okay, so security. Keep learning open, keep access controlled. Yeah, I thought of that.
That was very good.
So keep access controlled. We're working on an access control product, project right now. And what it is, is basically the building access control. What is that? Those are the, like, swipe cards you use to get into the building? Now, what we're doing is we're switching off what we currently have to a solution that's hardware-agnostic. Now, what does that mean? That means that we could use, the, the solution that we're going to can use hardware that we could buy from, say, Amazon, which, as you know, if we could purchase from a place like Amazon or even eBay, if you want, right? That could drastically reduce our costs, right? And increases our flexibility. So we're no longer tied to any single vendor's product, right? So that's, that's basically what we're doing. And this is a parallel migration, so we're, as we bring one system online, it's slowly assuming the roles of the older system. That way, there's no downtime. Okay. So now Jackie's got this great Future of Education team, and I'm really happy to be part of it. The team is made up of representatives from, you know, all buildings, and we're tasked with the following: establish guidelines for AI use, ensure student data privacy and security, define appropriate AI applications, develop teacher training programs, and monitor impact on learning outcomes. Now, we did the, we're doing the first two, and hats off to the teachers who came in over the summertime to establish the guidelines for AI use, because that is, it's a huge undertaking. It's a lot of work, tons of conversations, because we're really sort of at the forefront of establishing guidelines, right? So you can't just Google guidelines, because everyone's sort of scrambling to develop the guidelines, right? So we came up with, with our own guidelines, and we, I mean, Jackie shared them with, with teachers recently, right? So yeah, we're well on our way to exploring AI. Now, how could AI create new opportunities for learning? How does this fit into the board's core values? Now, this year is the opportunity year, right? So how does AI fit into all of this? Well, one product is something called quizzes, right? Quizzes is a quiz creation and quiz enhancement product. And what you could do is, you could create quizzes from prompts, documents that you upload, or even just single URLs, right? So you could paste in a URL, and it will develop quiz questions for you. It also has accommodations for diverse learners, like read aloud, extra time, you've got bilingual dictionaries, translations, and I even saw one today, if you're dyslexic, it could use a, a special dyslexic font to make it easier and less stressful for those with dyslexia to, to read it. So here's how it works. I went on the Putnam Valley Wiki page and just copied the link, right? Just copy the URL, and you drop it into quizzes. You see that single URL? Just drop it in, and then, ooh, here comes the laser pointer part, but I can't, over there. But as you could see, it created questions. Oh, I guess you can't read it. Well, this one says, what is the nickname of Putnam Valley, right? You see, you've got little choices there? Town of Lakes. See if I could zoom it in. No, I can't zoom it in. Oh, okay. Right? And the second one is, in which year did Putnam Valley incorporate as a town of Quincy? Right? And so, and so.
Would have been fun if we gave these questions to Sam without the answers.
It would, it would be fun.
To see how well he did.
I got them all right. I got them all right. Sam trivia.
But, but think about what it just did, right? It took a URL, and it read what was on the page, and then it developed questions, developed answers for you, right? I mean, that's pretty powerful, right? Just to take it from a link to develop these, these questions. Here's another format, you know, another quiz. I believe the answer is Fonzstock.
It is?
It is. Good, good, good. Now, keep, keep that in mind, keep Fonzstock in mind, especially the pronunciation is going to be important later. Okay. And now, these are all the accommodations, maybe you can't read them, but these are all the accommodations that quizzes has for diverse learners.
Redemption question.
Okay. So I don't know if everyone remembers this, but I kind of presented this slide last year. It said, don't be fooled, not everything is real AI. You see how there's a progressive lens powered by AI? I don't know how that's possible, but you're seeing a lot of products these days marketing themselves as having AI, like camera systems using like facial recognition or this, that, saying, oh, we use AI, but it's not. It's just recognition, right? But they're just marketing to you, we use AI, blah, 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 to try to sell products. So what does real AI look like, right? What we just saw, that's real AI, right? But I think we're all used to entering in text, right? You enter in text, a prompt, and then you receive text back.
Right.
Right? And then you're going to read it, or you could ask Syria a question or something, and then it'll read back to you essentially the text that it produced. That's what we're used to. Let me introduce you to Notebook LM. Notebook LM, has anyone heard of this, by the way? Notebook LM?
No.
You have? Gold star. All right. Notebook LM for me, it helps me learn in the way I learn best, right? So for me, this is a new opportunity. This is a new learning opportunity for me. What it does is I could take the same Wiki link that, that I shared before, right, the Putnam Valley link, and it can create for me these things, an FAQ, a study guide, a timeline, briefing doc, all these things. It could do that. So as you can see, you could, you could upload a link or kind of just like quizzes, right? So this is what it looks like. And you can see here that there's a timeline of events that are created for Putnam Valley, right? It created a study guide that you could use to maybe study for the quizzes quiz that you may get, right? But what else can it do? Let's rewind for a little bit. Okay. If you'll see, there's something there called audio overview, right? What is that? What it is, is Notebook LM has the ability to create podcasts. Now, I'm a podcast lover. It takes me thirty-six minutes to drive from home to here, and what I, that's, that's my podcast time. I learn a lot just by driving to and from work. So Notebook LM, using the same single link, remember, it's just one URL, paste it into Notebook LM, it could generate a podcast with two speakers, right? Educating you about whatever you want to learn about. Now, it doesn't stop there. Notice I said Notebook LM dug deeper, and it gathered more sources of information for richer content. It didn't stop at just the Wiki link. It looked at all the other links inside the Wiki. It dug, got that information, and incorporated it into the podcast. So it's more than just a text-to-text exchange, right? You're not typing something in, it's returning text and reading it. It's not that. It's creating conversation. Now, I spoke to the music department about three weeks ago, and they, they're experimenting with it. They took the kids to go see Carmen, the opera. So they used this to tell the kids all about what Carmen is about. Okay. So in the, in the, in the podcast that I created with this Wiki, it was about twenty minutes long. I'm not going to play that for you, because that's twenty minutes, but I will play four minutes and thirty seconds for you to hear. While it's playing, I would like you to keep in mind what you're hearing, right? Keep in mind what it's actually doing or what it did. Okay, none of these, none of these people exist.
... into another deep dive. Today, we're headed to Putnam Valley, New York.
Putnam Valley, New York.
Now, I know what you might be thinking.
What's that?
Another small town. What's so special about this one?
Right.
But trust me, Putnam Valley, with its self-proclaimed title of Town of Lakes, has some serious depth.
Town of Lakes.
Okay, we've got a Wikipedia article here, a pack of fascinating details about its history, people, and even some of the unique names of its communities.
Oh, that's cool.
So are you ready to jump in?
Yeah, let's dive in.
All right.
What's immediately striking is how Putnam Valley's past is literally etched into its landscape.
Okay.
We're talking the impact of the last Ice Age.
Wow.
With glaciers carving out those valleys and leaving behind those massive boulders you see scattered around.
It's incredible to think about these powerful forces shaping the very ground we walk on, right?
Yeah, for sure.
But before we get too lost in the scenery, our article mentions that Putnam Valley was once home to Paleo Indians, followed by the Wapengeer Indians.
That's right. These were indigenous peoples who thrived in this region long before European settlers arrived.
Right.
The Paleo Indians were among the earliest inhabitants of North America.
Wow.
Known for their distinctive stone tools and hunting practices.
I see.
The Wapengeers, on the other hand, were part of the Algonkin-speaking tribes.
Okay.
Skilled in fishing, hunting, and agriculture.
So their presence really adds a rich layer of cultural history to Putnam Valley, reminding us that this land has been inhabited for centuries.
Exactly, yeah.
It's amazing to think about all the different generations who have called this place home. Speaking of names, Putnam Valley wasn't always known by that title, was it?
You're sure. It was initially incorporated as Quincy in eighteen thirty-nine.
Quincy.
But just a year later, it was renamed Putnam Valley.
Okay.
Now, there's speculation that this change might have had something to do with John Quincy Adams's political unpopularity at the time.
That's interesting.
Maybe the residents weren't too keen on being associated with him.
A little bit of historical drama, I love it.
Yeah.
It just shows how even small towns can have these fascinating backstories.
Yeah, definitely.
But enough about names for a moment.
Okay.
Let's talk about what draws people to Putnam Valley today.
Right.
I've seen a lot of mentions of nature and conservation efforts in this article.
Absolutely. A significant portion of Putnam Valley is dedicated to preserving its natural beauty.
Okay.
We're talking about Clarence Fanastock State Park.
Fanastock, okay.
A sprawling area with hiking trails, lakes, and campgrounds, perfect for those seeking outdoor adventures.
Sounds beautiful.
Then there's the Hudson Highlands Land Trust, a nonprofit organization dedicated to protecting the region's scenic landscapes and natural resources.
So it's safe to say that Putnam Valley prioritizes its green spaces.
For sure.
I bet that appeals to people looking for a respite from city life.
Yeah.
Maybe even those considering a move out of the urban hustle and bustle.
You're spot on. And when we look at the demographics from the two thousand census, we see that a high percentage of households, about sixty-seven point one percent, were married couples living together.
Okay.
This combined with the median household income of seventy-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars paints a picture of a stable, family-oriented community.
It sounds like the kind of place where people put down roots and build lasting connections.
Definitely.
But what about the younger generation?
Yeah, the kids.
It's lifeline for students growing up in Putnam Valley.
Well, this is where things get really interesting. The Putnam Valley Central School District stands out for its unique approach to education.
How so?
They've implemented a program where every student from fifth to twelfth grade receives a laptop or Chromebook.
Wow, that's quite a commitment to technology.
It is.
But it gets even better, doesn't it?
How's that?
I'm seeing something here about high schoolers getting Apple laptops.
Exactly. It's a bold move that reflects Putnam Valley's forward-thinking approach to education. Their laptop agreement even states that this initiative is part of their mission to prepare students for the future. They recognize that technology is not just a tool, but a fundamental part of how we learn, work, and connect with the world.
That's like they're saying, we're equipping you with the skills you need to thrive in a digital age.
Exactly.
But beyond the practical benefits, I wonder what this says about the community's values.
Yeah.
Is there a sense that Putnam Valley embraces innovation and progress while still holding on to its small-town charm?
That's a great question, and one we should definitely explore further.
So what did we just witness?
The new state agents.
Right?
Our next ad.
As soon as that AI can drive the bus, then Sam and Dave are going to be out of business.
Right.
Not for nothing, but watching Jeremy just beam about all the things being said about Putnam Valley schools was a lot of fun.
I was thinking we need to update Wikipedia.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
It's about twenty years old, all of that.
That's right.
So, so think about this, just, and then, and then I'll move on, but really, think about this, from one link, just one link, and this was just four minutes and thirty seconds of a twenty-minute podcast that it created in a matter of minutes. It analyzed the data on the page. It went through the links in the page, right? Then it developed not just speech, but it developed conversation.
Yeah.
Right? In podcasts, people interrupt each other all the time with, yeah, hmm, you got it. And it somehow knew how to do that. Now, it didn't get everything right, Fonzstock, Fanastock, I think it said.
Yeah, yeah.
But close enough, right? I mean, that was pretty incredible.
It was amazing.
My mind's blown.
Amazing.
Okay, so looking ahead, what do we have to plan for? These are our successfully completed stage upgrades that we started in two thousand and two through this year. That's the multi-function device refresh, that's copiers. Storage replacement, that's like where all of our data is held, that's done. And the network core replacement that we just talked about, the roundabout, those are done. Well, you know, high school's going to be done in a couple of weeks. So just over the horizon, what we need to plan for is a server replacement. We, we have somewhere in the order of over maybe fifty or so systems running here, so that needs to be replaced. Switch replacement, and then the wireless access point replacement. The switches and the wireless access points, those are the roads leading to the roundabout. I think this is an appropriate quote, quote to close with. Any sufficiently advanced technology is indistinguishable from magic.
Absolutely.
And I think we just witnessed magic.
Yeah.
Today, with that podcast, right? But I'll tell you, though, this is where the real magic happens. This is the technology team. So, all right.
We agree.
I think it's.
I agree. Yes. Well done.
All right, yep.
Excellent.
Wonderful.
So let me.
Thank you.
When I, when you think about the magic, and you think about the work that you said you did to set AI standards and for students, like, how do you write a standard for something that is growing so fast and changing so rapidly?
Right.
That still keeps our, our students focused on what they need to be focused on?
Well, a lot of it is, is focusing in part on the fundamentals, right? So what do we know when we're developing a guideline or a standard? We know that we have to follow ed law two D. So we have to keep the kids' data private, right? Because we're, we're sort of mandated to do that. So then that means, like, if you just kind of like follow that tree down, we wouldn't necessarily use every AI tool out there, right? Because we're just not allowed to. So then, we have to kind of focus on, well, then which tools can we use? Then we identify tools that we can use, right? And then, from there, we develop training on those tools that we either have signed agreements with, that New York has signed agreements with, or, well, basically, that's, that's a huge one, getting the ed law two D passed. So, yeah, I mean, it, it all kind of stems from there.
And the goal is always moving.
Yeah, and the goal's always moving, but that's where ChatGPT comes in. We just, we just ask it.
Amazing.
So a question I have is, I guess, I'm thinking about this a little bit differently now after this presentation, is about the different applications that are run by AI.
Mm-hmm.
And what those cost, what we're looking at as far as what's available, what we know is safe for students to use. Dr. Left and I learned about school AI, right? Which is a, an AI platform for schools that's safer than just the world out there of ChatGPT. And I guess I was always under the assumption that it would just be that, and that would do all the things. But now, seeing that this is specialized in this particular feature of podcasts, I'm imagining that there are others out there inventing their own AI applications that are now going to be able to be siphoned off in different directions for specialties, right? So like, what, what does that look like? Are we, when we embark on using something, how is that initiative decided on? How is then the rollout of that initiative used? Like, how are we deciding, do we use this platform, or this platform, or this tool, or this tool? So just some questions I have, because I, I guess I was looping everything together in like a school AI platform that you would be able to say to school AI, you are a ninth grade global history teacher.
Yep.
Create a quiz for X, Y, Z from this particular passage, right? Instead of using an application just for that.
So again, so anything that we choose to offer has to meet that ed law two D standard, right? So immediately, that eliminates like ninety-nine percent of the tools out there. School AI happens to be one that is approved. And school AI, and I guess you guys learned about that, is sort of like a ChatGPT that's kind of like made safer, right? It's got like a safe wrapper on it. So it keeps the kids focused on what they're trying to look up, right? Now, when it comes to teachers using AI resources, like this one, like Notebook LM, that's currently available to teachers, not available for kids, right? So the teachers would be able to go in and use these resources, listen to the podcasts, look at the product that it, that it creates, and then from there, they decide whether that's appropriate for their kids or not. So that's sort of where we are now, right? We're trying to guide the teachers into, this is how you could use these tools to help you in the classroom. How do you create new learning opportunities for your kids using these AI tools, right? So for like the music department, trying to explain what Carmen is about. You could send, you could send the kids a Wiki link, or like, this is what Carmen the Opera is about. I tried to read it. I was like, I don't really get it. But I would, I would definitely listen to a podcast about it. Definitely.
Could this system create visual images as well?
Yeah, I mean.
In other words, you're doing a podcast, but see two people talking? Or i- in the case of doing an opera, a study of an opera, actually having that go on through AI?
Yeah, I mean, if you throw, yeah, if you throw enough compute power at it, it definitely, definitely can. But Notebook LM, since that's free, right? They're, they're not, they're not offering that sort of capability.
Right.
But when I do.
But it is possible.
It is possible. And hopefully, when it's the budget presentation, I won't be here and it'll be an AI person. So we'll see.
That would be cool.
Yeah.
You answered one of my questions, for the LM is free. Are we utilizing any of our budget to get any of these like school AI, or are they all free applications?
Uh, the only one that we're paying for right now is quizzes.
That's like the grown-up version of Quizlet when I was a kid.
Yeah.
It's ama- it's, it's amazing.
Yep, yep.
It is amazing.
Okay, yeah.
So just to add to the conversation, yes, there are AI platforms that could create a video instead, and all you'd have to do is upload a script or not even, you know, just a brief description of what you want to see, and it'll generate an entire video with voiceover and everything. So there are multiple platforms out there to use. Some do cost money, some have a free trial, some are free to use. The purpose of the Future of Education team is to be those pioneers, to be the learners, to go to BOCs on quarterly meetings and explore these different applications and tools. We come back and we meet together and we talk about things like, how do we introduce this to staff? Or is this even something worth talking about with staff? One of the purposes of the team was also to generate those guidelines. The teachers kind of knew what was within their parameter to do with AI at this time, and they're all made well aware of those ed law two D requirements. So they're not presenting the children to use any generative AI programs. But they can have access to these same programs we're talking about, so that they can use them to make their instruction more creative, more efficient, increase their own productivity. So those are some of the ways we're showing teachers and teaching teachers about the AI tools. To answer Barbara's question too, from the instructional side about standardization or standards in general, I think what still holds true is critical thinking, asking good questions. Each of these programs requires, if you really want to do it well and generate something awesome, your prompting, or the questions you ask it, or the task you give it to do, needs to be very specific, needs to be very detailed. So our students are still, if we're still in, you know, teaching them about being inquiry-minded, if we're still teaching them about being critical thinkers and being principled and reflective and checking, you know, their resources and checking for misinformation, they will do well with these platforms. But they need to be taught those skills first and foremost. These are just tools. You still have to have all of that same knowledge and understanding about how to use these tools and how to ask good questions and how to give specific details in order for something to, an AI platform to carry out a task.
Right, which places tremendous responsibility on teachers. Because with the students being able to find information in so many ways this way, like you have to really be connected with them as people and as learners in order to guide them. I, I remember at the regional dinner last year and they were talking, students were presenting, and they asked the teachers, well, like, how do you know whether the student generated their essay through an AI? And they said, well, like, because we read their, we read their writing all the time, like, we know, John, you, this is not your writing, this is not your voice. I mean, you know, teachers have to really be connected to their students in order.
That works right up until the fact they start day one using AI. And that's the only voice the teacher would know.
That's true.
Give it to them in class, they can't.
I had mentioned to Sasha during the, the quizzes piece, I said, or the other option is you upload the quiz and you ask AI to answer the questions for you, which it could do just as easily. So to your point, it requires us as educators to rethink how we assess, assess what we assess of students, right? What, how students demonstrate knowledge and mastery in ways that are not simply answered by AI in seconds. And I think that's part of the work that Jackie's team is doing, is to rethink how we think about education and how we understand what students know and what it even means to know and understand, right? We were told our whole lives we'll never walk around with a calculator in our pocket, so how important it was to figure out how to do a long division? And those teachers were all wrong. Oh, is that still a secret? Sorry. I thought that one was out there by now. Right? It was how important it is to memorize all of these facts, because you're never gonna have a dictionary or an encyclopedia with you, I should say.
But you do.
Except for now, everybody does, so. I think AI is just another, the next step in that sort of evolution of what does it mean to learn, what does it mean to understand, and how do we best prepare students to be successful in that world?
And I think of my late grandmother, born nineteen hundred, and when I was a kid, she was telling us about the wonders that she, she experienced with radio, that a box could talk to you. Nobody in the room, but that box is talking to you. And that, to the day she died, that amazed her. TV wasn't as much a, a big deal for her, but that box that could talk the first time, she said, I thought literally there was somebody living in there, a little creature or something, you know? And we, we, what you showed us this evening, Michael, is like, you know? Blows your mind. It, it just is incredible. And I guess that experience that my grandmother had looking at that box is what I'm experiencing tonight with that, that, that little podcast that you, you, you let us hear. I, I'm, I'm astounded, really amazed. It's awesome.
Awesome.
The opportunities for this are endless.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I think it's really good that you framed it that way, because we are all about opportunity right now and, and for the future to come, right?
Right.
And I think that right, right now, while teachers are starting to dabble in the abilities and capabilities that this can bring to their classroom as far as engagement is concerned, right? A podcast is gonna be far more engaging than just reading an article, right? And for auditory learners, it's an amazing thing. This was an opportunity for you. It's an opportunity for somebody like me. Maybe a video is an opportunity for somebody else, right? But I think that's the thing that I'm most excited about, is the ability for teachers within seconds to differentiate instruction based on student need, learning type, ability, lexile level, you know, whatever it is. You can't teach twenty-four different children by yourself every single day and meet every one of their needs. It's impossible. And we've been, we've proven that. It's exhausting. And our poor teachers have like worked to the bone to try to do that. And so I think the more that our district can fortify them with tools to be able to differentiate in that way and make learning personalized is gonna be really, really impactful. Not just to make it easier to plan or to say, hey, ChatGPT, write me a lesson plan for X, Y, Z, because I have an observation tomorrow, but to be able to say, give everybody in my class, twenty-four students, this same article and make it lexile level X, Y, and Z, so everybody can access the information, is so powerful. So more to come. Super exciting. And other languages.
Yeah, yeah.
Like Spanish, right, Sam?
Yeah, definitely.
Yep, great, great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Amazing, amazing stuff.
Okay, Dave.
I feel like poor Dave follows Mike every year.
Get into me again. This is why.
You know, the person who makes the agenda is.
I have nothing to blow your mind tonight.
The person who makes you the agenda is just to your left. I'm sure she accepts bribes or.
I tried. I did. Because I knew this was gonna happen.
No, no, because I, but I think that you're not giving yourself credit for the amazing, truly amazing work that you and your crew do in, in each of the buildings and the ground surrounding. I mean, absolutely incredible, amazing. And it's not done with AI or Chat, it's done by hard work.
That's right.
Hardworking people, men and women who work under you, so, you know.
You should just say thank you, or is there any questions?
Yeah.
What presentation starts with the compliments?
Okay, um, thank you, Mike. Next, uh, we have a deal, though. Every other time we switch, I go first.
Okay.
The budget presentation, great. Okay, so, um, so my facilities update for the fall. And I'd just like to, to articulate what our team does. And we effectively leverage district resources to create and maintain a resilient, safe, healthy, and beautiful environment that reflects a culture of excellence and opportunity. I underlined opportunity, it being the core value. And provide operational support for student-centered programs, activities, and events.
And that picture is perfect for that.
Yeah.
Just perfect.
I have good pictures. He just had spaceships. So this, speaking of good pictures, I took this one the other day, as I walked around. The, so tonight I'm gonna talk about capital project preparation. My, our summer of last summer is the two, twenty twenty-four facilities projects. A little bit about transportation, and I have one slide on security. So capital project preparation, as you all know, we have the turf track and fencing project. I'm not gonna, we, the last meeting Jeremy went over a lot of details on this, but we have that coming, hopefully starting around June first, so. And then we have the next capital project, that if it's approved, it'll happen in the summer of twenty twenty-six. That'll include all those things that Jeremy talked about, the parking lot redo, the, the new heating system at the elementary school, nurses' suite, library, all, all of, all of those things on, on the list. So, so what I'm working on a lot right now is collaborating with the architects, with Jeremy and other administrators and the operations team, and refining budgets, so that I can identify facilities' needs and wants that we can accomplish in-house and therefore exclude from the major capital projects, right? So if everything we wanted to do to improve, everything that Travis needed for the middle school or Margaret needed for the elementary school was all put into capital projects, it would, it would eat into, it would, it would take budget money away from, from the big things we need to do. So I try to just really think about ways to actually collaborate with them on what their needs are and then think about ways to accomplish those off, offline from the capital projects. So the summer of twenty twenty-four work. Now, in the, during the school year, about eighty percent of our time in my team is, is geared towards operational support. Of supporting, you know, cleaning classrooms, supporting board meetings, cleaning up after them. There's something going on in the pack tonight. I'm sure my guys are here doing that. Sporting events, everything. We, we're operational support. That's what we do. And about twenty percent of our time is little projects that we, and maintenance projects, basically. In the summer, things reverse. In the summer, we, we, we scale down on the activities and program stuff that happens on campus, although there still are summer, summer programs like E S Y and some sports and conferences, things we have to support and set up for and clean up after and make space for and all that. But we can spend a lot more of our time on other things. So one thing we do, as, as you're well aware, when you come back here in September, we clean every inch of every building from the, from refinishing the floors, if paint jobs need to be done. I mean, they'll pull all the lights out and clean every light bulb and every square inch. It's beyond a deep clean. That's it. And then, then after we get all that done, we can utilize the resources we have to do some of the capital, smaller projects that I talked about that we, that we can, we can pull out of the capital projects, right? The resources that, that I'm fortunate to have here, number one, two, and three really are, are my amazing operations team that we have here. It's not a huge team, you might think it is, but it's, it's very, very small for the square footage that we have to take care of, but they do an excellent job. And they're very talented and passionate about what they do here. And, and I, they, they really, they really lead the way for us. This year, our summer workers were, I've been here eight summers, maybe a top one or two summer squads that we got in. We usually hire about twelve people, whether they're college students or, or others that, that will come in and, and help our team accomplish these things, right? So if you think about twelve people, it sounds like a lot, but it's three in each building and three outside. That's what we have to help us. And then our team here, our cleaners and, and custodial staff will, will lead teams to, to get what we want to get done between the cleaning and these other projects. Also, we, in order to get things, a, a lot of things done, I, I will, we, we partner with local contractors. We hire them to come in and we work with them, and I'll show you some examples of that coming up here. We have some volunteers. This year, we had Zach Fitzmaurice did an Eagle Scout project. He came to me about a year ago, and we've been collaborating on what he can do to improve the trail. He's done some trail work there. He did that this summer. Then, of course, Matt, Mike's tech team, he's always very generous, especially with Matt Brady, and, and given him over to help me with a lot of things. So really, really, really a big help there. And then, of course, you all give, with Jeremy and, and Grace and, and the board, you know, give me the, the, you know, and, and instill trust in me to effectively use the resources and the budgets, the operation, operating budgets to, to make a difference here. So on to the projects. Elementary school, I, others did, but I hated this color from the first minute I walked in that school, this, this yellow color. It kind of made me feel a little. So we, we wanted to, to change that. It's a big school. I don't know if you've ever painted the interior house, but the elementary school is, is huge. So we painted it this color. I let, I let Margaret pick the color, actually, but I approved it. I could have vetoed it if I really hated it. And it came out real nice. So this was summer workers, custodians, the ones who could paint real well, did the hallways. I had to hire a local contractor to do the more dangerous painting that's on the stairwells that we had to paint. So, so that was the, the, the combination of, of efforts that went into getting the entire, all the hallways in, in the elementary school painted, and the bathrooms. Other thing we did, this is something that I, we looked at as part of our, our capital projects committee real early on. And, and bathrooms, as you know, if you've ever done one in your house, are very expensive. And, but the bathrooms at the elementary school, you know, some of them are from nineteen fifty-six, you know, bathroom, when they were, were built and not much was done with them. And they really needed, needed to be upgraded. So rather than spending millions of dollars in a capital project on redoing the bathrooms, I, we collaborated with, we have an in-house plumber who put in new fixtures. The, the plumbing fixtures, we had the team, custodial team, put in new fixtures like the paper dispensers and the, and mirrors and vents and replaced all, all the interior things. We hired a flooring company to come and, and get rid of those old little tiles with a lot of gross grout in them, right? So, and replace the floors. So there's twenty-seven bathrooms in an elementary school, which is why it seemed over, it seemed like an overwhelming amount to put into a capital project. Really would have been hundreds of thousands of dollars to do it. We did this work for about four thousand dollars per bathroom. Okay, so we, we saved hundreds, hundreds of thousands by doing it. We did thirteen this summer. We're gonna do the other fourteen next summer. That's, that's the plan. Middle school, this is where I took shop from Bruce Johnson back in nineteen seventy-nine. This was his room, and it was a classroom, it was a big classroom. We have a, a guidance suite that was inadequate for our growing needs there as far as social and emotional support for our students. And we had three offices and a conference room, and we tore that out. And we used, utilized this space to build a, a new student support suite. Now, just like when you do renovations in a house, one thing leads to the next. We had, if you can see in the back right corner there, where's Mike's pointer? There's a, there's, that's a roof drain that, it takes all the water from the roof and sends. and sends it down underneath the school and it meets other roof drains and goes out the other end, right? Over the years, for the last thirty or so years, we've had water problems in this end of the school, moisture problems, and when we had huge rains, these rooms would flood. And we were trying to get to the source of it, figure it out, figure out why, but I certainly needed to figure it out before I built a nice new guidance suite in there, right? So we figured it out and with the torrential rains that we get now, that all the rain comes in one shot, it's just too much water for that system that was designed in nineteen seventy-two to handle. So instead of, instead of having to go underneath the building, we, we exited out the side between the schools out there and hit one of the, one of the catch basins there. So it was a little bit of work. That was a local contractor who did that work for us there. This is the new student support suite. That's the entryway. I'll take you on a little tour. And there's Mr. Kane and there's another shot and there's a new conference room. The, the staff who I collaborated with all, the whole time along with, with Travis and Jamie really, really liked the way it came out. They're, they're thrilled with it. And now, now we have this beautiful new conference room and we have four really nice offices. This was now the old student support suite with the three little offices and the little conference room that was no longer adequate. We tore all that, those walls down and we had a contract to do some of the demo, but then we did all the finishing work to, to make it into a, a really nice classroom in the corner there. Outside, we did some grounds work here. This was just finishing up some baseball stuff. It's, it's going to sound like a small thing, but twenty-four years of, of baseball on this field has caused the clay to create these mounds around the infield and it had become dangerous where a ground ball will, will jump up and, and, and hit somebody in the face or something. So didn't want that. So we cut out three feet around the entire baseball field infield and it took that lump out and had to plant new grass there. We also, we had our kids pitchers warming up on the sidewalk and stuff and, and that was not, not the way things are done now. So we, we had our guys build this bullpen out, out there. We're going to work on getting fencing around that soon. Other work that you haven't seen unless you went up, unless you travel on the wellness trail often, this water under this campus is a bane of my existence. I battle water all the time. So this, the trail up near Foothill Street where it goes through there was always muddy and whenever I did something to mitigate that, whether I put boardwalks down or whatever, and it wasn't a, it wasn't a real solution. I was worried somebody was going to fall through one of the, the boards and the boardwalk and get hurt or something. Didn't want that. So for safety and to have this trail be really accessible, more accessible for more people, we, we, I, I did a, a final solution up there and we had our wonderful summer workers. These guys were great. Three, these are two of the three. They killed it. A lot of this stuff had to be done by hand. We had to dig some drainage. We basically, we basically built a road, built a road through the, through the woods up there. And this was all elbow grease and, and, and some truckloads of, of gravel. What didn't cost us a lot, but that's, I was up there every day. Eagle Scout work. Zach wanted to work on the trail, upgrade the trail. We talked about a lot of different options. One thing I wanted to do was to make the trail accessible for our gator in case there's an injury or something and poor maintenance of it. So the gator couldn't make the corner back in the back, in the back corner of the, of the, the back field over there. So this isn't the most exciting work in the world, but it needed to be done. So Zach built the retaining wall and filled it in so that we can get a gator around that corner. See, there's the corner with his helpers standing around him there. He also redid the sign at the trailhead and he's putting, as we speak, he's putting in, it's a mile-long trail, as most of you know, and he's putting in quarter-mile markers around posts in with quarter-mile markers so that people using the trail will, will have a, a guide as, he's a cross-country runner, so he loved the trail. Anyway, dealing with the solar farm, we fought against it. It didn't.
Lost.
We lost and now we have to deal with it, basically, right? So we, the things I, I and Jeremy were, were most concerned about, of course, safety. Don't want our students to, to access that, you know? That, that's what we think about first always. Stormwater was a major concern because of the, the, because when we have major rains, it does flood from that property even before the solar farm, over our, our parking lot. I have videos of it and I didn't, we're very concerned about all of the runoff creating even more problems when we have big storms. We expressed those concerns at the planning board meetings. We've talked and they said they came up with a plan that they're, they're charged with not worsening the problem a, as far as their town, planning guy explained us, explained that to us, their town engineer that, but that's hard to prove, right? So we don't know what eleven inches, eleven inches of rain in three hours are going to do. But, so that's what they're charged with. But as soon as they started cutting trees down, I went and I met with the contractor who was doing the work and he showed me what his plans were. Jeremy was very skeptical about whether they're going to work. I'm a little less skeptical. I think they have a decent plan. I worked with him to even improve some of that and build a big stone wall where the water comes up and we can slow the water down. That's, that's the job we want to do there. And then aesthetic, and, and this is something that, you know, maybe some people don't care about as much as I, but, you know, the bucolic nature of this campus is, is, it's a beautiful campus. So when you have all these solar panels up there, I was just like, oh, this is ugly. So, so what can we do about that? I, I planted a few pine trees, so, you know, maybe thirty years from now, I'm hoping people say, what solar farm, you know? So that's, that's the idea.
I like how you picked thirty years because thirty years from now is when the solar panels are taken away. That's when the lease is up.
Okay, so, you know, those trees will fill in. I did the math on it. Maybe twenty years it'll be there.
Maybe even faster.
That won't be around.
With all the water going down there.
Yeah, they'll get extra water.
If it rains again.
This is another thing, I don't know if anybody noticed, but it was, it was kind of a, something I've been trying to get done for a while here. This is the grounds tent. Our grounds crew was operating from the elementary school next to the transportation building. That, that grounds tent doesn't owe us anything. It used to be positioned next to the district office on the top. The first summer I was here in this job, right before the board was going to, going to come see the work we did, we tried, we dragged that, that tent down next to the transportation building. It gets, it got stuck halfway on the hill. I'm like, oh my God, the board is coming here and we have a tent stuck on our hill. It was very stressful. Jeremy was like, just, just tear it down. Just drive right through it.
I had been the superintendent for like ten minutes and there was a giant green tent stuck in the middle of the elementary school driveway.
It was, it was very, very nerve-wracking for me, especially when I was seven years ago and I was brand new here on, on, in this job. But anyway, we put it into place and they used it for the last seven years down there, but I didn't like the work environment, number one. Water would run underneath it. They're trying to operate in there. It, it wasn't well-heated or any of that. It wasn't a really, I, I didn't like the work environment for, for our, our, our really wonderful grounds crew. Also, in looking at efficiencies, with about eighty percent of our work is done here, the grounds guys, because we support the athletic programs that are mostly here. We have two schools and, and, and it's a much bigger campus here, so eighty percent of the work is here. So if our grounds crew starts here, they're day, rather than over there and having to get their equipment together and then bring it over here, it, it, it saves probably half hour, an hour every day and, and creates more efficiencies for them. So it also, we're also jam-packed over there in, in the way of parking, as everybody knows, at the elementary school. And we're bringing in a new, there's an opportunity, we're bringing in a new bus company to, one of my goals is to get more buses off of the top lot at the elementary school because of the, the crowded situation there. I didn't like it. And, and I also wanted to create more of an independent space for, for Royal Coach to operate out of then, rather than in our office with us. We're kind of two separate entities that work together, so I wanted to create that. And so pulling the, the, the maintenance vehicles, their personal vehicles, and this tent out of there created a space for me to move buses down from the top, create a space for them over there. And so that's what it looks like now and that's a little, that's the operations trailer that Royal Coach brought in that we hooked up for them and that's where they operate out of. And we created about, you know, fifteen parking spaces, twenty parking spaces over there. So that worked. So where do the grounds guys go? So that building was ugly and falling apart. So we came, we, Jeremy had thought about a bunch of different options, went back and forth, but killed two birds with one stone again here. We did a renovation on this building, a little one, and made it into a much nicer building, much more useful for the guys. And used it as like a Putnam Valley branding opportunity with a big brand banner on the side. I had that lit up and it's, it's a, they're very happy there and, and it's, it's a really, I don't want to say it's a beautiful building, but it's, it's much nicer. And I, and because of the roof, I made the roof tilted towards southwest so we can put solar up there and it'll be really good later. Anyway, transportation is, yeah, transportation is next on my list here. And just to remind folks, in Putnam Valley, we have a hybrid bus transportation service where our, our Putnam Valley employees, bus drivers and monitors generally do the out-of-district and special needs transportation. And then our contract company does the to-and-from school, the big buses that run, you'll see on the roads every day. And, and they do the sports runs and a few of our out-of-district runs as well. And so as you know from our presentation last year, we substantially expanded our, our team in Putnam Valley and we, we brought a bunch of really good people on board, really thrilled with, with the, the, the people that have come in, both the drivers and the monitors, just great people and they're doing a great job for us. So I want to welcome them and hats off to them. If you see people you don't recognize, I'm seeing here driving, driving one of our buses, say hello. They're really cool people. Equipment update, the, the zero emissions buses are on hold. As I was pursuing this project to do the zero emissions buses to meet Hokel's mandate, you know, what, I made a presentation that we could do it at a very, at not much of a higher cost than it would be, or no higher cost than it would be to, to, to continue with gas buses. That's when their estimated number for an electric bus was going to come in at three hundred and fifty thousand. When I actually got the quotes, I drove a few of them. We, we test drove them. We, we checked them out. And then I said, okay, well, give me a quote. And that came in more like four hundred and fifty thousand. So that hundred thousand dollar problem, I talked to Dr. Luft and we just said, okay, until either the, the price comes down or the incentives go up or something changes, we're kind of just, I, I know enough about it. I can make, I can make moves real quick if we, when, when, when things change and, and you guys give me the, the push to do it.
I don't think it'll happen anymore.
Okay.
David, you know, now.
Yeah.
With the new administration, you know, the, the, the cost and it never made sense to me, you know, the electric bus. It just never did.
Right.
And I think there's a lot of like minds like mine now.
Yeah, and so, but one thing, when I was analyzing the, the equipment over there, really to get, to, to just understand the economics of the new contract with the bus company and to look at this E V mandate, you know, I, we, I looked at the routes that we were doing in-house and a lot of them to our out-of-district were really like, you know, one or two or three students to Poughkeepsie or to Yonkers or, you know, somewhere else. And we're using those, those small buses to do that, right? And that's what we had. We had thirteen small buses that we were running around every day. They got about ten miles to the gallon and, you know? So we bought, we bought three, we're getting two more on the way of these hybrid minivans.
Love it. That's the way to go.
We can get two for one. They cost half as much as the small buses and they get three or four times the gas mileage. So it's.
The hybrid.
And so we've, we've executed on that plan and, and it's really working out well.
Yep, good.
Great. How many people can you get in the, in the vans?
Seven passengers, so we get six, six students.
That's good.
Are they accessible, like wheelchair or do you have any?
Uh, no, not for wheelchairs. We do have a wheelchair, small, small van that we use. Maybe a small bus. We, we call them vans, so I have to check that. But they're, it's twenty-two passenger vans. We, we have one that we took some seats out and have wheelchair accessible. And if we, if we have more needs for that, we can, we can borrow one from Royal. They have extra ones too.
Great.
I love the hybrid.
So Royal Coach, as you know, we, we have a new contract and, you know, this is always very nerve-wracking for us to have a, a contract company that's not our employees, that we trust with the, the safety of our students and, and that. So, you know, we really worked hard negotiating a contract with, with, with the company. Not only did they win the bid on the price, but they, they bring it, they bring us some other things to the table as far as, as technology. But, you know, one, one thing we're, that, I'm a little crazy about safety for the students. So, you know, students standing on buses, I can't take it, right? So, you know, in the aisle, you know, it, it, it drives me crazy. So, and that ends up, also if students are moving around inside the bus, it causes some other discipline issues, especially for elementary school students. High schools are sound asleep on their way to school. They're, they're not a problem. It's really the, the, the elementary school students. So we, we set up a meeting with all of the drivers, our drivers, Royal Coach drivers, and the administrative team from the different, the, the assistant principals to talk about a, a plan on how to get students better behaved and safely, from my standpoint, just safely behaved on the buses. So now they, we're trusting each other, working with each other to, to work on that and to improve our student safety from the student's standpoint in the bus. These buses have a lot of cameras on them, right? So we have four, four cameras inside the bus that now have different angles so we can see inside the seats.
Great.
Okay, we use these not for surveillance, but for investigations. Okay, that's what we do. And it has cameras on the stop arms on there. When the stop sign goes out, if you drive by that stop sign, it's going to take a picture of your license plate. You're going to get a ticket in the mail, hundred percent. So it has those cameras. It also has cameras that face out, out the front of the bus and are on the driver. It's a, it's a third camera system that's on the bus that is for, I, I won't call it A I, Michael. Okay, admonish me. It's not A I, but it uses a, a, a recognition of, of movements to train the bus drivers on how to drive more safely. So what it does is if the driver takes their hand off the wheel, they get dinged. It gets, they get notified at the, at the, the dispatcher gets, that, that bus driver will get dinged. If they go across the double yellow, if they speed over two, two miles an hour over the speed limit, they get dinged. If they, if they come to a stop too quickly, they get dinged. If they roll through a stop sign, they get dinged, right? So, and they get rewarded for having let, fewer and fewer of these things. It's not a, a punishment thing. They're really trying to train these drivers on, just get in the habit of doing everything right. Don't roll through a stop sign. Don't, you know, don't do any of this. don't do any of this. So, um, it's a really cool feature, um, that I'm trying to, I'm looking over the dispatcher's shoulder to see how it works and, and make sure that, that, that it is working the way they said it is. So, um, that's another technology feature that they have for safety. They also, um, we're experimenting, we're piloting a, a parent app that they have, the technology, where they're going to, um, uh, be able to geofence your, your location, and when the bus gets within a quarter mile of your house, you'll get notified.
I love that.
We're working on, we're going to make sure it works before we roll it out, right?
I get my alerts every morning.
See, it's working so far.
Following a Lakeview School bus and a Roaring Brook bus, and every morning my phone dings and tells me it's within, you actually said custom areas, so you can set, if you wanted to sort of know when it's at, a little bit further down the street, you can pick that location, or otherwise you can just pick your own home location, depending upon how close the bus goes to your actual address.
That's cool.
Uh, but we know there's other districts that are using this technology. They've actually taken the step to move from a commercial-based program that tracks the bus to their own in-house program. So that's what we're waiting for. They're in a development phase of their in-house program, which will great, give them greater flexibility, ability to quickly incorporate enhancements. So that's something that they're working on, and it is already deployed in some districts. And I think we're getting pretty close, I would say maybe, um, right after New Year's, maybe it'd be a good time to roll it out. Flyers ready, we have training manuals, actually Dan helped us create, or Alex helped us create a quick little training manual for how families can find their transportation route number, which is the information they need. So, uh, more to come on that, but we're excited for it, and it's something they're going to continue to expand. Like, their plan is to be able to see the entirety of the bus route.
Yeah.
You'll still get alerted when it's within your zone, but if you want to pick up your phone and see where is the bus today, like, did we miss it? Did it pass by stop or is it not yet here? You'll be able to pick up the app, open it, and see exactly where on the route the bus is.
Yep, that is, that is.
That's, that's coming. Probably won't be there when we start, but it's something they're working towards.
Yeah, so, you know, they, when we were negotiating the contract with Royal Coach and Beacon Mobility is their parent company, they talked about this technology that we were excited about, but we're actually, they're actually, they actually have it, and we're implementing it, we're using it, and we're learning how to, how to roll it out appropriately. So, so that's some pretty cool stuff. Last slide here is safety and security. Um, you know, I, I just want to do a cursory thing here, just give the, the board an update on what we've been doing. We work really hard. It's on making sure that we're as safe as we possibly can be here. We partner with law enforcement, as you know, we have an SRO here, SPOs at the other two schools, that's our primary line of defense. And, uh, but we also partner with law enforcement in our, in our drilling. We want to bring anybody that might respond here to our school, whether they're Yorktown Police, State Police, you know, bring them in to our drills, so that we can first of all teach them what we do. And what, and, uh, you know, here, that's specific to Putnam Valley, our technologies, our protocols, all that, and to have them, you know, learn that, those systems, and to, and to learn our schools, you know, to, to not, if the first time they're responding here, it, I don't want, don't want that to be the first time they're ever, ever in our school. Where's the gym? Okay, you know, now they know where the gym is. So we partner with them on, on that. We've been working with Alteris and, and Boise Safety Services. I have been working with them both for the last eight years on, and they're experts, and, and I, I basically try to implement everything that they tell me are the best practices, um, you know, from soup to nuts, from, from, from hardening to protocols to technology to training and that. So, um, uh, we collaborate together with the building administrators. We have building emergency response teams in every school, I go to every meeting. We have a district emergency response team. We, these, these teams have been used to continually, to continually update and upgrade as, as things change, as events happen, and we learn more about new, new threats or, 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 or new and better ways to do things. And Alteris wanted to do a presentation to, to tell you all how great we do, great a job we do in Putnam Valley. Like, we really are a model for what they, when they look at, they're, they're consultants for schools all over the country, and they use us as a model for what they, what, what they want other schools to do. And, and that, because they told me what to do and I just did it. Anyway, um, so, um, and then something else, uh, the training we had, we, we do training for our staff here, and we moved that training to Superintendent's Conference Day. We make sure that we, we bring our staff through there, but invariably, some people fall through the cracks, they didn't make it that day. There's cafeteria staff, and then I'm thinking, it's like, wow, you know, what about a substitute teacher who just gets hired?
Yeah.
Or, or gets, someone gets hired during the school year, you know, and they, they don't, you know, and, and they don't know what to do here in an emergency situation.
Good.
So, um, so I, I, the first time after Superintendent's Conference Day, we got a list of whoever wasn't there, and I did these like ten little mini training sessions myself with the custodial staff, clean staff, and the kitchen staffs in the different buildings and all that. And then we, I, I'm talking to Mr. Dan Mahoney here to come up with a, a training video. First we used AI to do the video, it wasn't that great, right? It was, I know AI is impressive, but, but then I had Dan and Kat do a video of basically the, the cursory training that everybody needs to have here to, to operate, that now is part of the onboarding process when they hire a substitute, but when they, they have a link to that and they can watch that video. It's a very short video, but very well-done video. Thank you, Dan. That's it. Questions?
The, the work that you, you've done, David, is just remarkable, and I love the, the in-house work, because it does save the district and our taxpayers a ton of money. And it, it's always top-notch stuff. I mean, you could point out so many different things that, that your crew has put together under your guidance, and you would think that we went out the contract on every one, but we didn't. We did most of it in-house, and that, that's a prideful thing.
And our, our crew's very proud of the work. In fact, when I have outside people come in, they're always like, I would have done it better than that. You know, so, yeah, they're, they're very proud of, of, of the work here, so, thank you.
As they should be. Um, I think I said this last year, but you are just so incredibly thoughtful in how you deal with all of the things that fall under your responsibility. So thank you so much.
Yeah.
I think that you truly understand that not only should our spaces and our buses and our systems be safe for children, but that they're also beautiful, because beautiful spaces matter. All you have to do is take a look at this cafeteria floor on June twenty-fifth, and it is still sparkling the way that it does on the first day of school.
Take a shot of that.
And I still haven't figured out how you do it, so you and I need to chat, and then we'll talk, talk about your spreadsheets too, because I love that conversation. But, um, really the level of care that you put into your work and that your team also puts into their work, which is a direct reflection of your leadership.
Yeah.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to say that I think that the bus transition to the new company was really smooth. Um, we love our bus driver. My little five-year-old adores him, thinks that he's like, you know, like Uncle Tom. And, um, it's really been a very smooth transition, and I'm excited about the app. I think that that's wonderful for parents to just, you never know if you got there one minute late and your heart starts to race that you're going to get that call from Mrs. Roby at the elementary school.
Yeah.
So, you know, all good things to be able to track the buses. I love that you're bringing back kids to work in the summer, that's awesome, and the Eagle Scout Project, that's also awesome. Our kids are putting in, you know, a piece of their heart and soul into the schools here in Putnam Valley, so that's great. I think the bathroom renovation, it's, it's one of my pet peeves, for kids to have to go to a bathroom that's old and dirty and dingy, and there's really not much you can do. It could be clean, but it just doesn't look clean if it's that old. And so, thank you for being creative with that, and I'm glad to hear that the other bathrooms are getting done, because that was going to be a question I had. The fact that you're doing the practice drills with anybody and everyone who could possibly respond in a real emergency, I think is phenomenal. Thank you for, for thinking about that. And I wanted to just mention that I'll, just, I'm sure our video is absolutely amazing, I just want to say that, but Alteris does offer a video on GCN. Um, I don't know if that's been explored, but it might be another layer of support for somebody who maybe forgot a procedure or something like that. And then, uh, a question, more so for Dr. Lofton, Grace. I think there's a great level of care that goes into what our bus drivers do, and they often go above and beyond because they don't have monitors on the bus. I know that even if we created positions of monitors, it would be nearly impossible to fill. My question is, in, in trying to be creative about our little kindergarteners who get on that bus on the first day of school who have no idea what they're doing, my daughter is like really with it, and she was like deer in headlights, because mommy had said to her, sit in the front row, because you're a kindergartner, you sit in the front row, but there were already kids sitting in the front row when she got on the bus. And so she looked at me like, mommy, what do I do? And then full transparency, I tried to get on the bus, and the bus driver was like, you're not getting on that bus. So I'm sure you have footage of me on the first day of school.
Training paying off.
Thank you.
Stranger danger.
Perfect. You know, I was just testing what he was going to do if somebody tried to get on my kid's bus. No, but in all sincerity, first of all, he was very professional in that whole, you know, thing, and my thing was I just wanted her to be sitting with her seatbelt on. And so, um, as a, as my third child and being in education, it still caused me anxiety in that moment, to know that I wasn't sure, particularly just because I couldn't see it for myself if my baby was sitting down with her seatbelt on on her first day of school. So my question is, could we potentially post for one of our perhaps current employees just for the first week of school to perhaps get an extra hour or two for the bus ride to school and the bus ride home, just as they get transitioned? Now, I will tell you, by day two, she was good. She knew what to do, she understood the process, but I didn't have a sibling on that bus for her, and I had to ask like another twelve-year-old, I didn't even know who he was, to help her sit down, so, or a ten-year-old. So, you know, I'm not sure if that's a feasible thing, but I was thinking about ways to be creative.
That's not a bad idea.
So one of the big, one of the big advantages of our new contract, it was something that was really a non-negotiable for us, was we reserve the right to place our own staff to serve as monitors on their buses.
Great.
Our previous bus contractor would not allow it.
Okay.
So while we haven't necessarily had a conversation about front-loading the first few days of school, I think that's actually a very smart idea and something that we could certainly pursue, we, we can, we can have any one of our staff members on the bus. In fact, Dave's been a monitor a couple times this week.
I'm going to be a monitor tomorrow afternoon.
Uh, but that's part of the problem. Everybody wants monitors on every bus.
Right.
And more so than a financial issue, it's a staffing issue.
Right, for sure.
I could not find eighteen people that are going to, twenty-four people are going to show up here every day to be a monitor on a bus.
Right.
It's nearly impossible.
It is very challenging.
To Dave's point, we keep sticking other staff members on buses just to fill vacant monitor spots.
Yeah.
But we do have fantastic aides and teaching assistants and others who are willing, I mean, we have a teacher, Megan Boyle rides the bus all the time.
Yep.
Uh, to help support students. So, uh, that's certainly something that we have the ability, first of all, contractually we have the ability to.
Great.
And for us, it's, we use it now when, we have sort of a hierarchy of bus monitoring, right? It's the bus driver, they do their best to correct the issue. If they're unable to resolve that issue, moves on to the, the building staff. We've already trained all our elementary school students, we brought them into the auditorium, and we showed them the bus videos, not necessarily with kids in them, but we wanted them to see what we see.
Yeah.
Think about where you sit, here's the camera that sees that seat, everything you say and everything you do every day is on that camera. So if you're thinking about doing something that you know you shouldn't be doing, no, that camera's watching you, right there doing it. So with that referral to the administration comes the bus video.
Right.
So that's our automatic request. So this happened on the bus, here's the video, see for yourself. Because now we can sit down with the child and let them see themselves do the thing that they'll tell their parents they didn't do.
That they didn't do, yeah, mhm, absolutely.
So then the final step of that is if the behaviors are not improving, we've addressed it with the child and with the parents, we've reviewed the video, then our sort of final step is we can temporarily place a staff member on that bus to help ensure that students are acting appropriately. Now, it's not a long-term solution, I can't find someone to volunteer to do it every day.
Right, right.
But certainly we have fantastic support staff that would be willing to do that in short-term, um, uh, times as, as necessary. So that's sort of how that works its way through.
Sure.
But we could certainly have conversations about the first day of school. It would be interesting to know how many buses have a kindergarten. It's probably just about every.
We need about twenty-five monitors for the first day of school.
Twenty-five monitors.
I'll do one, twenty-four.
How many?
Twenty.
If you let us volunteer, we'll do one.
You know, I actually, I went and talked with Sandra today from Widdens, the food service company, what are they called?
Widdens.
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 Widdens. I was used to Aramark for so many years. Anyway, because it to, I asked her if I could recruit some of her staff to be substitute monitors.
Right.
Um, you know, because their, their schedule, in fact, one of our monitors who works for us also works for them, and, and the scheduling works.
Right.
So, um, just trying to pull out all stops to get, you know, it's not a high-paid job, but it's also, it's not, it's not hard.
Yeah.
It's not really not. I rode around the other day, just riding around the bus. It's easier than my regular job, that's for sure.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I've often, it's actually a lot of fun, too. I hear that Sam is really good at that. He takes the bus tour for all the new teachers.
Yes, Sam, okay, first day of school, now we only do twenty-two.
That's amazing, that's great. I, um, you know, the, the, uh, the Widdens idea is a great one, and I know a lot of schools that utilize that. Additionally, uh, I know that we have lunch monitors at the elementary level, that the schedules may coincide to be a bus monitor slash lunch monitor because of the way the hours work. So you guys, I'm sure, have multiple ideas to figure that out. The only thing that I really wanted to come away with suggesting is just, in the midst of that transition on that first day of school, for those of us who have heart palpitations, it's, it's good to just have another adult while they're getting used to the bus, because they're babies, some of them are four.
We can also establish standards of behavior, and we can establish our expectations, and if you get them to do that for a couple days, then maybe they'll do that for a lot longer.
They're quick, and then they're comfortable, and it's fine, you know, it's just that first day of school really matters. I, I mean, I think to everybody, to the kids certainly most. But yes, and then my last question is, what do you need? Because, and maybe I shouldn't be asking this question, so I apologize if I'm asking it at the wrong time, but it seems like you're a very modest department that works extremely hard for the benefit of our children, um, like, you're doing a lot for a very small department. And so I pose that question, uh, because this is no small task. What you presented tonight was vast information done at the highest level of excellence that has probably given you headaches day in and day out, you know, just to be able to see how you made those bathrooms work, to be able to see how you're making the current field work for our kids. Like, the grounds are extensive, um, really, what, what could you use to support the work a little bit more?
How about I, I think on it for a minute, I have some ideas, but I'm not going to say them in public right now, talk to Jeremy first.
Say, you want me to be a little bit nicer, too?
The budget presentation.
Yeah, budget time is coming up soon enough.
So, like, really, just, just think about that, because I know oftentimes, you know, we try to do status quo as much as we possibly can. I think that the district is wonderful in figuring out what we really need and ways to get us what we need and for our children.
Yeah, we maintain the same staffing here for the last eight years.
Yeah.
Within.
Right. And, and, I mean, they do such a tremendous job, but they're human, right? And I, I just, I can't fathom how, how you're able to pull out of them what you do, and I think that if we can support, we may or may not be able to, but if we can, we should certainly look at that.
You know, I got to tell you, I, I appreciate the support, I really do. I, I sat on this board, as you know, for, for seven years, and the, the support that you guys give me, not only verbally in your compliments, but, um, but the, the trust and the money, the budgets to get done with these capital projects and, and, and the other things. I've had wonderful support from Jeremy and, and, uh, before Jill and now Grace, get fantastic support. So I don't want to, I'm good, for the most part, but I'll get back to you.
Sounds good.
So, I was just thinking about the bus monitor thing, and, well, not a long-term
So I was just thinking about the bus monitor thing and, well, not a long-term solution. What I was thinking was that first day of school, we stagger start, so that high school only has ninth graders, albeit many of the seniors are here for the freshman foundations, big buddy work.
Right.
But also fifth and sixth grade starts at the middle school that first day. So we actually have a large group of seventh, eighth graders, 10th and 11th graders that don't go to school that day. And I wonder if we could find 25 student volunteers who would come in for a quick little training on what we expect. And at least you would know that.
Big buddy on the bus.
At least you would know that first day of school, you would have a student assigned, right, an older student assigned to that bus to help with at least getting those children buckled their first day, to see sort of model what the behavior is and then hoping they could replicate it in further days.
Put a junior or a senior on that bus, those kids would be amazed because they really looked at it. The older kids are superstars. They do.
So I just thought of that when you had brought it up. I said, we have a lot of kids that aren't in school those days.
That's a great idea.
I'm sure we would have no problem finding 25 kids to volunteer in any community service areas.
We, we could give them community hours for that, right?
Yeah, for sure.
Awesome.
So it's something I'll discuss with Mr. Mello, possibly Mr. McCarty, and figure out if the way to identify those individuals and if that's something we could work towards. They're already our students, they're covered by our insurance, there's no issues or anything like that. So it seems worth exploring.
Yeah.
The hard part's gonna be kindergarten is split the first two days, so I gotta free these kids up for next year day. But I did wanna just say a few things about facilities. While I greatly appreciate everything that Dave does, he sometimes sees the worst of me. Something, something about facilities and transportation brings down my OCD. So he went to show me the, we did a, like a pilot bathroom. Like this is what it could look like, this is how much it costs us if we scale it out 27 times. This is how much it would cost versus, or versus bringing in a contractor to do it. So he's showing me all about the bathroom and I'm like, what's the deal with the fan? What's the deal with the vent? Why is the vent not clearing? Everything else was done, but all I saw was the dirty vent. So now he's like, the vents are all being replaced. He makes sure to tell me every time. But he's in my office nearly every day. What's going on? What do I need to know? What's the update? So I give him all the credit in the world, despite my OCD sometimes coming out when it comes to facilities and transportation. Or what email, what transportation email I got today. Dave's done a fantastic job of overseeing, especially that transition to our new bus company, which I could say has actually exceeded our expectations regarding how quickly they were able to come in, get the equipment here, get their staffing up to speed. And for Dave to really model the expectations that we have for them in Putnam Valley. And that's something that I think we were able to quickly establish. No, that's not gonna fly here. You need to fix it. And that's really all thanks to Dave's oversight. The other piece is, and I know we always talk about how fantastic our facilities and our grounds are, and that is all very true. We're all very proud of it. The other piece that Dave had taken on, which he had hinted at, Altaris wanting to come, Brian Shanahan, who's our consultant from Altaris, reached out to me just gushing about how amazing Dave has been regarding his leadership of our school safety protocols, partnership with law enforcement, collaboration with Altaris. Like you said before, he attends every BERT team meeting, he facilitates every lockdown drill. He's out there standing with the police officers, directing them. You should know how to open this building because you've been trained. You should know how to get the key because I'm not opening it for you because I'm not supposed to be here. Once you're in, you should know how to access the maps because again, you've been trained how to do that. So really making sure that all of those things are happening in as real life of a situation as possible. Because when they show up and they're standing at the door waiting for someone to swipe them in, if there's really something going on, nobody's coming. Except for maybe me or Dave, who aren't following directions. But it's, it really goes a long way and I think Brian would do a much better job of articulating all of the things that Dave has done. Reunification is everyone's greatest fear.
Greatest nightmare.
God forbid something happens to get kids back in the hands of their parents is a tremendous undertaking. And it's, I was amazed when Brian was updating me all of the things, just in the past year, we have changed regarding the ability to, the plan has always been based on sort of a static location. This one goes here, this one goes there. We won't share where because that's supposed to be confidential. But Dave was like, well, what happens if we can't get there? Right? Do we throw our entire plan out the window because we can't get to our predetermined location? So we actually created mobile packs that include everything from laptops and access to, preloaded access to our student management system. So we're not reliant on internet service if we go somewhere else. And discussing what those other locations could be in the event that we couldn't get to our primary reunification piece. And that was something that like, Brian's like, nobody's even talking about this stuff. And you guys have already developed a plan regarding what that would look like.
It's amazing.
There was a school recently, they did the reunification on the turf field. I don't think it went so well. That, that, we crossed that one off. But it's something that we're prepared for multiple contingencies based upon what it is. And that's something that obviously wasn't part of Dave's job when he was hired, but it's become part of his job and I did wanna take a moment to compliment him because really Altaris, our security consulting company thinks very highly of him. I think they tried to hire him the other day when I was there. So if Dave leaves us, he's working for Altaris.
They couldn't pay me enough.
It's important.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Is it possible to get Zach Fitzmaurice to do just a short presentation or give him pride in Putnam Valley for his work or something? I don't know. I think, I know he's away and he might, you know, be home over the holidays or whatever. Anyway, I, I just think, I, I really appreciate the work that scouts do for our town. I hear so many of their projects when I'm listening to their, oh my God, I'm losing my mind. When I listen to their presentations about the, the work that they do, volunteers. So I just, I just think it's always nice to, to link the actual face to the work. So anyway, if we could get hold of them, that would be good. Okay, we don't have student reps tonight. We really miss them. I really miss student voice and I hope they know that they're missed. But Dr. Luft, they didn't steal your thunder. You can say all the things first that they would report on.
So I will, I will check in with Mr. Mello about our student reps, make sure they're still okay. So what do we have here? I do wanna take an opportunity to thank, I know right after we last met, we had our first responders, the homecoming football game. I did wanna just quickly acknowledge the members of the Putnam Valley Volunteer Fire Department Color Guard, who sort of led the parade down the field. And thanks to the connection with one of our Putnam Valley parents who came to the elementary school, Community Reed, we actually had the NYPD Color Guard. Came up from New York City and participated in our ceremony coming down. So it was really impressive. They were here at 3:30 practicing for their 6:30 start, walking up and down the hill, making sure they had the right formation and they knew where to stand. So kudos to them and the Putnam Valley Volunteer Fire Department for leading us in our first responder appreciation event. Along those same lines, as everyone is aware, yesterday was Veterans Day. So I do wanna take an opportunity to thank all of the many veterans that live in our community, that have served our country. I always tell the story, I have, one of my proudest days as one of four boys and the eldest of the four boys, was attending my brother's graduation in Paris Island, the Marines. He gave up a full ride to college, a baseball scholarship, to join the Marines. As you can imagine, my mother was not thrilled with the decision. That's a story for another day. He did come back and finish college and is very successful with his family and everything. But it just, I wanted to put it out there. Thanks for the service for everyone in the Putnam Valley community who has served our country and across the country. Our theater works, Fall Drama, Girls in the Boat, happened last weekend. So I know they had a showing Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Kudos to cast and crew. I've attended a bunch of meetings, a lyric advisory committee meeting, athletic council and Section One Executive Committee meetings. These meetings focused on several topics. Mixed competition is one I get lots of questions about. There was a lot of talk about allowing boys to participate in girls' sports, girls participating in boys' sports. Thankfully, the Education Department has shelved that proposal for now. I think the feedback was immense and definitely concerns regarding Title IX and girls' ability to participate in girls' sports rose to the forefront there. Regional rotations is a little more nuanced, but essentially Section One always gets stuck with the extra travel bill. We sometimes have teams traveling up to Binghamton or Syracuse or Albany midweek for a regional game when other areas of the state are not even participating in a regional game. So that's something we continue to work on. I haven't made any friends in Long Island since that conversation started. I don't expect any invites anytime soon, but I'm working hard on behalf of Section One to at least make that equitable across all sections. And Schools Without Borders conversation really focuses on the dominance of private schools participating in the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. For those who remember, the girls' basketball team went to the state semifinals last year. We lost to a private school. That private school went on to play a championship game against another private school. And that trend continues to grow. Again, for an organization that preaches equity, I don't know how you can compare a school that is bound to the students who legally reside within their school district compared to a school district that can handpick students from across the state. And then compete in the same championship. So it makes a little sense. There's a lot of legal ramifications and a lot of theories out there, but it's something that seems to be continuing to grow traction. And hopefully there's a subgroup of superintendents working on it and legislatures are involved. So more on that, but those conversations are happening. Attended a finance committee meeting focused on our health consortium, specifically on the working spouse rule, which only impacts the 18 component districts that participate in our work, in our health consortium. So as usual, I got outvoted, but I'm still in favor of it going away. And our CSA Chief School Administrators meeting focused a lot on regionalization. I know I provided a quick update on regionalization last year. Poor Jackie got tasked with completing the regionalization survey. She's just now starting to talk to me again, so that's good. She must be nearing completion. But it's information that we're submitting to the state and we're hopeful that they are following through with what they said it was, which is really an opportunity to share best practices and advocate on behalf of what school districts need. Obviously, there's implications tied to foundation aid and what the Rockefeller Institute proposes as changes to the foundation aid formula. But we won't know that information until December, so more to come on that. Our budget review meetings are beginning. It's almost another we finish our updates, we jump right into budget season. So in the next few meetings, we'll start to have budget presentations. Quick sports update, I think we had covered some of these. Game Day cheerleading and the girls' field hockey both won section titles. Game Day cheerleading won the sectional title and the state championship last year. Unfortunately, they finished second in the state this year by .2 points. That's what I hear. I don't know how you lose that much. It could be an untied shoelace or something. It feels like a very miniscule amount. But again, they continue dominance, not just in the fall, but also in the winter. And our girls' field hockey team, God bless them, had, for the last three years, has lost in the sectional championship game. Heartbreaking losses, games that we absolutely dominated. Last year, we had lost to a team in the last like two minutes of the game on the one shot that team took in the game. So while our team dominated the entire game, we just couldn't get one in the goal. They took one shot with less than two minutes left, went in and they won the game. It was heartbreaking. So they overcame those challenges. Many of these girls have played on that team for three or four years and they were able to finally bring home that sectional championship game. So congratulations to them. Well-deserved, as long as their coaches, Tracy Parson, Dan Turner. It was a very exciting game and I'm so happy they won. Unfortunately, they lost in the next round of the regionals, so. But they won their sectional championship, so they're happy. Our volleyball and football team also competed in the sectional semifinals. Unfortunately, they were not able to move forward. And there's certainly many individual successes across our cross-country and girls' swimming teams. Girls' swimming is ongoing. I wanna talk a little bit about Dr. Stowell from Garrison, came to visit us. He was first scheduled to come visit us on the day of the manhunt. I can say that and everybody know what I'm talking about. So we had a reschedule. He came. It was really an opportunity for him to meet with our administrators, we gave him a tour of the building, hear from some of our teachers, and then really have an opportunity to meet with the students that, the Putnam Valley students that are residents in Garrison. And we're very clear that throughout these conversations, they're never the Garrison students. And I had pointed out during freshman foundations, and we were in this room, and 13 students came from Garrison school districts. We had 13 incoming freshmen, two brand-new sophomores. And I said, where are all the Garrison kids? And Mellow to me goes, I don't know. Because there wasn't a table of Garrison kids, right? They were already interspersed with all the other Putnam Valley students with their mentors or big buddies. So that's really the culture that we want here. So we do our best, we never refer to them as such. So it was a great meeting. It was an opportunity for the new Garrison superintendent to hear from his students. Why'd you make the decision? What do you like? What don't you like? Thankfully, nothing they don't like is of our doing. As usual, Dave left already. I shouldn't have said such nice things about him. But transportation is of course their primary concern, but Garrison's responsible for their transportation. So Mr. Stowell has taken that back to them. And sort of aligned with this, we actually have an opportunity, I know some of the board members plan on attending. We were invited to present at the Garrison Board Meeting tomorrow. So Mr. Mello, myself, and maybe some others will be presenting. I know others will be in attendance for support. But I think it's a great opportunity for us to highlight and showcase some of the amazing things that we have to offer here in Putnam Valley that we think students of Garrison would benefit from. So looking forward to that tomorrow. I have been asked the question, the, the manhunt day did in fact count as a snow day? A poorly worded snow day. It was really an emergency closure day. So we have officially used one of our emergency closure days for a manhunt. We have had electrical days, tornado days, flooding days, snow days, ice days, and actually sunny days, which are my least favorite, when we close school when we think it's gonna snow and then the sun comes out. We've had those days often.
That is true.
And what else I got? What was that?
Should I ask AI, we should close now?
So, alright, so upcoming events. We have tomorrow is the gym show, so there's two showings during the day for students and staff and then an evening showing, 7:00 PM tomorrow, elementary gym show. If you haven't seen it, I encourage everyone to come out. We spoke a little bit about the Garrison Board Meeting also tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Not our fault they're scheduled at the same time. Only out of control of one.
That's true.
And then Thursday, I know several of us are attending a regional meeting with the Westchester Putnam School Board Association to meet with a consultant talking about foundation aid. So that'll be at Tilly Farms for those who are going Thursday evening. Monday the 18th, we have our Garrison Parent Meeting for Garrison Parent Meeting here on Monday the 18th. So an opportunity for them to come to our school. We always do a fantastic job. Our students, take them around on tours and show them the building and answer any questions they have, as well as the presentation and the pack. And then the 19th is Muafateta Math Honor Society. The 25th is the Gratitude Festival at the high school. Again, if anyone's never been, I strongly encourage you, come check out our students. Our extremely talented students and staff performing. And December 4th is our Languages Other Than English Honor Society Intention. And I wanted to thank everyone, and not thank, I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. I think that's it.
Yep.
That's a lot. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to new business. Sam, you gonna start?
Yes.
Take a big breath.
We have a resolution providing for the holding of a special school district meeting for a bond referendum in and for the Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam and Westchester Counties, New York, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. And the recommended action is as follows. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam and Westchester Counties, New York as follows. Section one, a special school district meeting of the qualified voters of the- Section one, a special school district meeting of the qualified voters of the Putnam Valley Central School District, Putnam and Westchester Counties, New York, shall be held on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five in the Putnam Valley Elementary School as herein after described in a notice of special district meeting attached heretofore as Exhibit A and hereby made a part hereof. And the polls shall be kept open for voting between the hours of six o'clock AM and nine o'clock PM prevailing time on said date. The proposition herein after set forth in said notice of said special district meeting shall be submitted thereat. Section two, voting at said special district meeting shall be conducted by the use of paper ballots. Section three, the clerk of said school district is hereby authorized and directed to cause a notice of said special district meeting in substantially the form attached heretofore as Exhibit A to be published in the official newspapers, being two newspapers, having a general circulation in said school district. Such publication to be made so that such notice shall appear in said newspaper four times within the seven weeks next preceding such special district meeting. The first publication to be at least forty-five days, but not more than forty-nine days before said meeting and to give such other notice as may be deemed desirable. Section four, the school district clerk is hereby authorized to amend the notice, excuse me, of said special school district meeting from time to time as in her discretion such amendment may be required or desirable. Section five, to the extent required by law, the Board of Education shall appoint election personnel to conduct said special school district meeting pursuant to a separate resolution of this Board of Education. And section six, the action contemplated by this resolution has been determined to be a type-two action which the school district has determined will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. Section seven, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Second, questions or comments?
I came up with all that language myself and it was pretty good, right?
It was good.
Sound convincing?
I liked the "thereat" there, right? I've never heard of "thereat."
So I feel like every time this comes up in any form, I feel the obligation to share that this is the culmination of work about a year and a half for our Facilities Planning Committee. This work is meant to address some of the items that have been raised on our five-year state mandated building condition survey, that this work will be completed using, um, both capital reserve funds, uh, sixty-something percent of the money is back in state aid. And the most important piece, which we will continue to reiterate, is the funds, the remaining funds that will be used to pay for this project will replace expiring debt, which means that there will be no new taxes, um, on the community members in order for this to happen.
Exactly.
Uh, and that's our, we're going to continue to repeat that as much as humanly possible to ensure that everybody understands we are doing all this work. This is necessary mandatory infrastructure-driven work and it can all be done without there being any increase in school taxes as we look to replace retiring debt. So now that the board or after the board officially approves this resolution, our, we'll really begin ramping out, ramping up our sort of PR and communications campaign to ensure that everyone in the community has the information they need to make an informed decision on January twenty-eighth. And we hope it doesn't snow.
It won't.
Ever again.
Form Resolvent Access. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Andrea Bain to a probationary appointment as a teacher aide effective November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five at the elementary school on step three of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Madeline Deegan to the probationary appointment of teacher aide effective November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five at the elementary school on step two of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Connor Pugh to the provisional appointment of part-time computer support assistant effective November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four in the Technology Department on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? I think he actually made the team picture that Mike Lee had a.
His name is on there.
Huh?
His name's on there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comment on any topic.
All right.
No?
You guys are just here to watch?
Okay, upcoming meetings. Huh?
Sasha called them rock stars for being at the meeting. So our, our next meeting will be held Thursday, we're going to go back to Thursday meetings again. Thursday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. And we're going to start talking about budget?
We actually have, I don't know if we have budget presentations scheduled yet. We have a little bit of a backlog of other presentations we're trying to do. So we may try to squeeze in, um, a couple of updates that I know Jackie's got a sort of a backlog of them. We want to try to find opportunities to squeeze in, so we might, uh, provide some other updates, maybe kick off our budget discussions and then push some of our other budget presentations back.
Great, okay. Board member comments?
I, I just, you know, often I criticize the Department of Education and I know I do that. But this one time I've got to praise them. I am so pleased that they're actually considering doing away with that requirement of the Regents exams and instead willing to accept a trade certificate as a, a level of achievement or an IB diploma as a level of achievement or even community service in lieu of the Regents exams. Those Regents exams have caused more concern, uh, for our, our young people who want to walk a different path. And, um, this elimination, and they're talking maybe by twenty twenty-seven, it's, it's not going to happen right away. And it certainly has to have a lot more work and a lot more explanation. But I really do, I, I praise the state for that. I think they understand that our trade area, we don't have enough people going into the trades. And one of the biggest obstacles is trying to, uh, deal with the, the Regents requirements as put forward in their last, uh, reconfiguration of graduation requirements. So I, I praise them for that and hopefully this will come through because I would love to see our people who want to go into the trades and get their certificates for that, work out a better schedule where they're not hinged to a science Regents or an English Regents or a math Regents, uh, and, and can follow the path that they desire and will benefit society. So kudos to the state of New York on that and, uh, Department of Education. And hopefully this, this will manifest itself in the years to come.
Yeah, and I see it as a really positive.
I do too.
It, it goes along with our, our theme of the year of opportunities. I mean, it gives more pathways. It's, it's not that they're taking away the Regents. The Regents will still be there for people that want that pathway. But there will be multiple pathways. And there's not only one way to get to be successful.
I think it's a great idea.
So just a quick note on that. Again, I commend them for the work they've done regarding sort of laying out these phases in which they hope to begin this work. There's definitely a thousand questions that still remain. But it's, it's obvious that they're moving in this direction. For public notice, the Regents exams are not going away, right? Students' expectations to take them are not going away. And for those who want to pursue Regents.
It's still there.
It's still there. And there's no plans to take them away.
Right, right.
There's a lot of conversations. No, no, I don't think you did. I think you just, there's multiple pathways. Regents exams is still one of the pathways.
Right, exactly.
But obviously that controls our curriculum and, and things like that, so do that. What there is, what they're going to begin to do for the first cohort, which I believe is our current ninth graders, is to decouple passing the Regents with graduation.
Exactly.
So you'll no longer need to pass that Regents exam to graduate if you have some other alternative proficiency in its place. So I think that's the work that's going to start to unfold for our students. And then they have, then they get into sort of the next phase, which is reexamining the number of credits that students need to earn and what counts as a credit. And I think you were speaking to that, that probably speaks sports of the CTE pathways and things like that.
Exactly.
And, and what that looks like for students. One of the big pieces that actually is coming up soon on the priority list, and I, I see Joe out in the, in the audience and he was always asking for this, is schools are going to have a requirement to teach finance, financial literacy and climate education.
Good.
So those are going to be state mandated curricula that, or standards that schools are going to have to be prepared to start teaching, I think as soon as twenty twenty-six is when that rolls out, um, those two components. And obviously I'm working with Mr. Mello and Dr. Payne and others to figure out where does that fit in our, our current schedule. But that's something I know as a board, we've spoken about for years. And we do it for many and many different ways, but this sounds like it's going to be a universal standard for all.
Excellent.
I have something.
Yes?
Um, I met with Zach Adams. He is the Business Development and Member Relations Manager at NISBA. Um, I met with him virtually to go over, since I'm a new board member, they offered the opportunity. I took the opportunity. Um, I went over, he went over the website with me, um, and gave me a lot of insight on some of their policies, their governance, their legal information. Uh, they actually have a lawyer on staff. If we don't want to reach out to our own, we can, they will, um, give us some information, nothing specific, but pretty, pretty interesting. Professional development, advocacy, business partnerships, um, and even some areas for recognition. So we can actually nominate some of the things that we do in, within our school district to be published by NISBA and get some of the recognition that we deserve. So I'm going to look into it a little bit more. I'm still in touch with Zach, um, so that we can get Putnam Valley on the New York State School Boards Association.
And Jeremy's going to fix the Wikipedia page, right?
Yeah, he's going to fix the Wikipedia page.
I'm going to ask AI to fix the Wikipedia page.
Amazing.
Chat GPT, uh, open that, fix that up.
I, um, I wanted to say about, uh, the Garrison students that, um, I'm, I'm living what you talked about right now. My daughter is the best of friends with two students that came in from Garrison this year. And, um, she's really bonded with them in such a short amount of time. And, um, she has told me that there is literally no difference in where they come from. And, and that's really hard to achieve in ninth grade. It's hard to achieve in third grade, coming into a new district and feeling like you've always been a part of. But the way that she explained it to me is that they're Putnam Valley kids. And, um, I'm just really proud of that. I'm really proud of that. That's who the, the community that we are, um, to be able to wrap our, our, our arms around these new students and make them feel like they've always been here. Really, it's a kudos to, um, the administration and the tone that all of you set forth, our teachers and the way that they, um, embrace these students, um, to make sure that they don't feel any other way but that they're a part of our family, so. It's great. I'm excited about tomorrow.
Okay, anything else? I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Okay. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.